Good morning, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order and I'd like to everyone to identify them as I call their name. Todd Ferante is present, William Buchanan.
Present.
Katie Addis.
Present.
John Andes.
Present.
William Gordy.
Present.
Elena McComas.
Present.
Donald Smack.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Can I have a motion to approve today's board meeting agenda and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. McComas and a second by Mr. Smack, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, on Monday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, a closed session meeting was held pursuant to general provisions of Article three dash three oh five B of the Annotated Code of Maryland to conduct first round interviews for the superintendent vacancy. A motion was made to close this session and to select Dr. Nick Wallace and Dr. Monique Wheatley-Phillip as the finalists for the superintendent vacancy. The motion was made by William Gordy and the second was made by William Buchanan. The motion carried six to one with Katie Addis opposed. Now I need a motion to enter into closed session for the following reasons. To approve closed session minutes from the previous month, Section three dash three oh five B, to discuss appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees or employees or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects more for one specific individual, and Section three dash three oh five B nine, to discuss matters related to negotiations. Can I have a motion to enter into closed session and a second?
Moved.
Motion by Mr. Buchanan.
Second.
A second by Ms. McComas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session. Good afternoon. As we reconvene this Board of Education meeting, I want to remind everyone that we do have a quorum. A closed session meeting was held today pursuant to the general provisions of Article three dash three oh five B of the Annotated Code of Maryland to approve closed session minutes, to discuss personnel matters, discuss matters related to negotiations, and to discuss school safety. Now I have with us Reverend Dale Brown from the Community Church, and he would be leading us in the invocation today. Reverend Brown, thank you for being here, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gentle and loving God, we pause this day to give thanks. We give thanks for each student, each staff member, each administrator, and this board for all the hard work that goes into the important task of educating the youth and children of this county. We also pause today to give thanks for Superintendent Taylor's leadership. We pray during that during this time of transition, you would give to each of us wisdom and the ability to think clearly, to see the big picture and not to pick favorites. And we pray also for the safety and well-being of each student, and we ask that your love and presence might rest and abide upon us, in God's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Reverend Brown, thank you for that invocation today. We appreciate it. Okay, board, can I have a motion to approve the open session minutes from March fifteenth and April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five? Motion by Mr. Smack and a second by Ms. McComas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And now I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Ferante, and good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here today. This month, I wanted to touch on just a few recognitions we have coming up. In late April and early May, we are gearing up to recognize a few remarkable groups of people. First, we will celebrate our administrative assistance and National Administrative Professional Day Wednesday, April the twenty-third, and School Nurse Day on Wednesday, May the seventh. These often unsung heroes of our schools and offices are really where the rubber hits the road, so to say. They are the friendly faces that greet our students, staff, and visitors each day in each school, setting the tone for each school and office they occupy. They wear many hats, they are the ultimate multitaskers, and they keep our school system running as smoothly and successfully as it does. Our school nurses take it a step further as they ensure our students remain healthy and happy throughout their learning process. They are invaluable resources, and we are so blessed to have each one of them. And our next group I am just as excited to celebrate, the first full week of May as we honor, and in just a few minutes, is a teacher is Teacher Appreciation Week. Tomorrow, we will hold the thirty-eighth Annual Teacher of the Year Celebration, and it will be held at the Ocean City Convention Center, where we will celebrate not only the teacher candidates vying for the title, but all teachers in public education, especially those here in Worcester County. During the celebration, we will honor fourteen amazing candidates from each of our schools who represent the best of teaching each day. Having the opportunity to learn a bit about each candidate, I sit before you today confident in the abilities of our teachers to engage and inspire our young people to achieve their dreams. I would be remiss if I didn't thank all the incredible teachers that serve here in Worcester County. And I also would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to also recognize our school librarians. While in just a few minutes, the board will proclaim April as School Library Month, I want to commend these certified professionals for not only inspiring our young people in their love of literacy, but so much more. I would encourage you to come into our libraries and see the work they do. Our librarians have created Maker Labs, are collaborating with classroom teachers to expand the way students can demonstrate their learning, and of course, they spearhead one of the most successful and nationally recognized countywide programs that we just had, our Media Expo. All of our people, from our teachers and librarians, to our nurses, to our administrative and support staff, and every individual that works here in Worcester County Public Schools, are an inspiration, and I know the whole community echoes the sentiment that we are so proud of our Worcester County Public Schools family. And I know as superintendent, I am honored to work with them each and every day. Thank you, and back to you, Mr. Ferante.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And now I'm going to turn it over to our two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five student representatives, who are going to provide us with their monthly updates from their schools, and I believe we're starting with Chloe from Snow Hill High School, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ferante. Worcester Tech recently competed in the Maryland Skills USA State Competitions. Eighty-nine percent of the school's seventy-nine participants placed in the Maryland Competition's top ten. Seventy-three percent placed in the top five, and fifty-seven percent placed in the top three. Additionally, WTHS boasts twenty-first place winners across categories like medical math, robotics, and automation, teamwork, and technical computer application. Gold medalists are heading to Nationals in Atlanta, June twenty-second through twenty-eighth. Worcester Tech's agricultural agriculture program is in the news. Through our partnership with Worcester's agriculture agent, Megan Perdue, students are taking care of two mother goats, Faith and Samantha, who each recently gave birth to twins. Students are getting real-world, hands-on experience taking care of four kids in their animal science course. Additionally, Worcester Tech's agriculture program was recently recognized as the Excellence for Outstanding FFA Chapter by the Maryland Agriculture Teachers Association. Worcester Tech's Nursing and Biomedical Science Student Organization, HOSA, had several Maryland State winners in their recent state competition. Twelve out of fifteen Worcester Technical High School competitors finished in the top ten. Six students were in the top five, and two students finished in first place. The state accolades students received in Skills USA, FFA, and HOSA illustrate that Worcester County students are not only excelling in their CTE programs, but are demonstrating that they can transfer their skills and compete against their peers across the state of Maryland and win big. Worcester Tech celebrates their two thousand and twenty-five Teacher of the Year, Chef Phil Cropper. We want to wish Chef Cropper the best of luck as he competes for the two thousand and twenty-five Worcester County Teacher of the Year title and trophy this Wednesday evening. Good luck, Chef. Worcester Tech thanks the Board of Education and the executive leadership team for your continued support of our students, staff, and school. We want to wish everyone a safe and relaxing spring break with family and friends. Now onto Snow Hill High School. As our busy spring continues at Snow Hill High School, students are celebrating a season of full of accomplishments in the arts, academics, and extracurriculars. On Saturday, approximately one hundred and thirty students gathered at the Snow Hill Fire Hall for this year's prom, themed Enchanted Evening. The night featured dancing, great food, and an exciting after-prom event back at the school, complete with inflatable games, a caricature artist, more food, and prize raffles. In athletics, congratulations to Mara Milburn and Justin Shipley, who were named the two thousand and twenty-five Bayside Scholar Athletes, in honor recognizing their dedication to both academics and sports. The performing arts took center stage with several successful performances of Rogers and Hammerstein's Cinderella, featuring outstanding student performances, beautiful vocals, and creative set design. Special thanks to Mr. Watson, Mrs. Klein, and Mrs. Lambertson for their leadership and direction. In the visual arts, students earned top honors at the Fine Arts League of Ocean City's Manga and Anime Youth Art Show. Daisy Harris won first place, Oja Bordina placed second, and Sierra Merritt received honorable mention. Academically, Serena Weaver earned first place at the state level in the Maryland Literacy Association's Young Authors Contest for her short story, Girl in the Backseat. In STEM, Cash Johnson placed seventh in the Electric Vehicle Division at the Maryland State Science Olympiad, who held on April fifth. In addition to academic achievements, several seniors reckon were recognized this month with scholarships. Abby Gaskell received the two thousand dollar Laurel Anderson Healthcare Scholarship, while Chloe Hoffler and Mary Anne Rutzler were each awarded the two thousand five hundred dollar Larry Nutson Service Scholarship, presented by the Rotary Club of Snow Hill. These honors celebrate students who demonstrate outstanding service and commitment to their communities. To further support students' futures, our Counseling Department welcomed representatives from Warwick Community College, who helped seniors enrolling for the fall get registered for their classes. We also hosted dual enrollment sessions to assist students in completing their applications for the upcoming school year. As we continue to celebrate the people who make a difference at Snow Hill High, last week we recognized Assistant Principals Appreciation Week. Mrs. McGinnis and Ms. Salvarola were honored for their tireless work and dedication to both students and staff. Looking ahead to the coming weeks, we're excited to welcome Cornell Thomas, an international speaker on April twenty-fifth. He'll speak to students about overcoming adversity, setting goals, and cultivating a positive mindset. Then, on April twenty-ninth, we'll close out the month with our final fast Family and Schools Together event of the year, featuring food, yard games, snow cones, and a tie-dye station, community vendors, and baseball and softball games. We hope to see many of our families join us for this celebration. And just around the corner, our We Excel banquet is set for May thirteenth, a special evening to recognize excellence and achievement across our school community. Now to Luke.
Thank you, Chloe. I'm going to be starting with the Pokemoke High School. Recently, our Pokemoke High School students have achieved great success across a variety of areas. We proudly celebrate our student investing team that are in third place out of thirty-three teams in the Stock Market Challenge, a testament to their strategic thinking and financial skills. Five of our talented chorus members had the honor of performing with the All-State Chorus, representing our school with distinction. We also recognize six outstanding student athletes who have officially committed to playing collegiate-level sports, a significant milestone and source of pride for our entire community. Our two thousand and twenty-five prom themed A Night in Greece was a truly magical evening filled with joy, elegance, and unforgettable memories. The celebration continued with a lively and well-attended after-prom event generously sponsored by the Students Against Destructive Decisions. Special recognition goes to Abigail Windsor for winning an award for her artwork at the Worcester County Drug and Alcohol Prevention Banquet. Several of our future educators participated in the Man the Shore Conference, engaging in meaningful conversations around education and leadership development. Additionally, three of our student athletes represented us with pride at the Athlete Leadership Summit hosted by Salisbury University, where they honed their leadership skills and connected with peers across the region. Our recent spring blood drive was a heartening success, with over forty students, staff, family, and community members stepping forward to give the gift of life. Meanwhile, seniors continue to submit scholarship applications and finalize plans for their post-secondary paths. In one of our most cherished traditions, they are also inviting their one, the pre-K through twelve staff member who inspired them, to stand by their side during intent night. Looking ahead, we have a number of meaningful events on the horizon. This week is Sexual Assault Awareness Week, and our SAD chapter has partnered with the Worcester County Child Advocacy Center to organize impactful daily activities that educate, engage, and raise awareness. On Tuesday, we look forward to celebrating student talent at the Fine Arts Festival, where visual art, music, and performance come together in a showcase of creativity and talent. Wednesday brings our Career Cafe for the ninth and tenth grade students, providing an opportunity to explore diverse career paths through direct engagement with community professionals. In honor of Earth Day, we are excited to break ground on the Pokemoke High School Community Garden, a collaborative effort as a community school in partnership with UMES, students' families that promote environmental stewardship and hands-on learning. A new session of driver's education will begin on May fifth, offering our students a crucial step towards independence and responsibility. Finally, we are proud to announce that on Thursday, May fifteenth, we will host We Excel, a celebration of academic achievement in which we will honor over sixty percent of our scholars for their dedication and success. We extend our deepest gratitude to the Board of Education for your continued support and commitment to our schools and community. And now on to the Stephen Decatur High School report. April showers bring busy times at Stephen Decatur High School as our celebrations, special events, extracurricular activities, sports, and testing all heat up. Looking back, SDHS had a lot to celebrate. First, we were delighted to host another successful job fair where over forty local businesses offered exciting opportunities to our Worcester students. We inducted a hundred and one new members into the National Honor Society in March, and we inducted twenty-seven new members into the Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society two weeks later. It was great to have Decatur graduates Dr. Sarah Keenan and Ms. Alex Claggett return to our hallways to serve as guest speakers. Congratulations are also in order for our senior Brooke Burkequist, who will be honored as a good citizen by the Daughters of American Revolution later this month. In the world of our daily operations, our Guidance Department teamed up with Warwick Community College to begin scheduling for next year, and Salisbury University was in the house again to welcome all the senior commits and to present random scholarship drawing. Additionally, our school just concluded a major blood drive, or a major drive for Believe in Tomorrow, and we have assembled dozens of boxes filled with beach supplies for children stricken with life-threatening illnesses. We also have club fundraisers, including the Key Club Basket Raffle for UNICEF, and the Choir Boosters Candy Celebration. As usual, our after-school academy is busy with tutorial, AP prep, and enrichment programs. Looking ahead, our Surf Fighter Clubs excited to celebrate Earth Week, complete with tips on energy conservation and plastic reduction, and campus cleanup. On April twenty-ninth, we are beyond excited to recognize our hundred of We Excel honorees along with SDHS alum Symphony Twenty-One founder, Mr. Daniel Bowen, who will serve as our We Excel guest speaker. Also looking ahead, we are anticipating nearly six hundred prom guests at the Ronald E. Powell Convention Center on May eleventh. And last but not least, our theater program is currently busy preparing for the annual Shakespeare Under the Stars production of Love's Labor Lost later in May. Meanwhile, in the testing world, we are extremely busy preparing to administer four hundred and ninety-five advanced placement examinations, which is over a hundred more than last year in twenty-eight different areas to three hundred and eleven students. This is in addition to nearly one thousand MCAP assessments that we are gearing up for. Finally, in the sports world, our spring sports teams all collaborated with our Morgan's Message Club to raise money and awareness for the mental health of student athletes. Additionally, we are looking forward to our spring signing ceremony on May second, and we are excited to see what our two hundred and fifty-plus athletes will be able to accomplish in the postseason. In closing, we'd like to publicly thank the many surrounding businesses and organizations who are donating time, food, prizes, and funding for our after-prom committee. We'd like to wish our Teacher of the Year candidate, Ms. Belinda Sawyer, good luck. And as always, we'd like to thank our central office leaders and our Board of Education members for your continued support, and wish everyone warm spirits as warmer days are ahead. Thank you, and back to you, Mr. Ferante.
Lucas, thank you, and Chloe, thank you. I mean, you guys flawlessly picked up a couple of extra reports there, and you did a great job, so we thank you for doing that, and there's never a lack of activity going on in the schools, and we appreciate you being here today, so thanks so much. It's now time to recognize members of the audience and joining us today from various organizations. Anyone here from the WCTA? There you are. Good afternoon, that, thank you for being here. Anyone here from the WCESPA? Thank you, Ivory, and guests, thank you for being here. Chanel? Thank you for being here, too. Appreciate that. Anyone from the Worcester County Retired School Personnel? Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members, and good afternoon, Helen. And any PTA, PSYICs, anyone here from any of those boards today? Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. It's now time to do recognitions. We have student page recognition, FBLA recognition, and winter sports recognition, so we're going to come down and we're going to give some recognition to them.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Jess McInerney. I'm a coordinator of instruction here, and I also organize Worcester County's Page Program. One senior each year is selected to be Worcester County's student page. Students go, they see legislative sessions, they interact with our state legislatures, and complete other civic duties. This year, I'm really happy to recognize Evan Todd as Worcester County's Maryland Page. Evan excels at advanced placement courses at Stephen Decatur High School. He is the captain of the academic team, and he's also in four honor societies, including being president of RoKappa, which is the Social Studies Honor Society. One of Evan's highlights from the Page Program was seeing the legislative session on the floor, and also pulling the balloon for the last day of the legislative session. He went back, so, very exciting. Evan is going to be attending William &amp; Mary in the fall, double majoring, it gets even better, everyone, double majoring in history and political science, and he actually was accepted into this prestigious honor. He will be completing two years at William &amp; Mary and two years at St. Andrews in Scotland, so he will be doing a full immersion, yes. Congratulations, Evan, on your future plans and also being Maryland's Page from Worcester County.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jason Conyer. I'm a business teacher and FBLA advisor at Snow Hill High School. For the last fifteen years, I've been FBLA advisor at Worcester Technical High School and now at Snow Hill High School. This year, I'm really proud to announce that we have a Maryland State Champion in Accounting Two, Cash Van Marsh. Last year, as a sophomore, competed in Accounting One and got third place, and qualified for Nationals. This year, being a state champion, you know, is a big deal in advanced accounting, in the second accounting course. So we're really proud of him, you know, super excited to see what he might be able to do in California this year at Nationals. My shameless plug, if any of you would like to sponsor Cash, we are looking for donations. It's a little over thirteen hundred dollars to send him there, but either way, again, he's been an excellent student in the business program. I'm really excited to see what this student's next steps is going to be. In the fifteen years that I've been doing FBLA, I've only ever had four state champions, and this is my fourth one. So, super excited to see again what he's able to do, knowing that he still has yet another year of high school, and then obviously seeing what his next step is. I mean, the guy's name's Cash, you know? I mean, the guy's name's Cash, you know? It's pretty cool, so. Yeah. I mean, this guy's got a bright future, yeah. All right, Cash.
It's always exciting to see our students being recognized. Congratulations. Now it's time for us to recognize our winter sports scholar athletes. I'm going to let our supervisor of athletics, Mr. Sam Slakem, go ahead and introduce our coaches from here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, I'd like to thank our board members for their continued support of this, you know, of this enrichment opportunity for our student athletes. Whether it's band, chorus, athletics, you know, the enrichment opportunities that high school provides for these students help to round them into the individuals that they eventually become, so thank you, you know, for your continued support. And I'd also like to thank the administrators of the high schools and the athletic directors. They're the unsung heroes. They're in the trenches every day. They're dealing with all sorts of things. You know, I appreciate it when they keep things off of my desk and off of my phone, so I can't thank them enough for everything that they do every day. So, without further ado, we will start with Pokemoke High School and introduce Mr. Derek Fooks, Athletic Director.
Thank you. Board of Education, appreciate it. Thank you for the invite. We always count it a pleasure to be able to come and recognize our student athletes, and it's no different this year. I'm not going to steal any thunder from either one of the coaches, but what I do want to say is that all of our athletes are students first, and that goes to show in our winter season, out of 63 athletes, 48 were Minds in Motion athletes, and it's about 75%, and that is great. And always know that academics comes first, so I'm going to introduce Coach Monique Douglas, and she is going to introduce her player, and she's going to tell you a little bit about her.
Thank you, guys, for having us today. So I have Donnie Washington with me. She's our senior with the graduating class of 2005. Donnie is a true scholar athlete. She was my team captain for the last three consecutive seasons, and she's been on our varsity team for all four years of her high school career. She, in addition to being named All Bayside South First Team, she also was a Minds in Motion recipient. She was our MVP for the team for the last two seasons and received several nominations for Player of the Week. She also received, well, actually achieved some career milestones as well. She was ranked number two in the state of Maryland for max reporting sites for her total rebounds this season. And she finishes her career with 1,020 points, 1,054 rebounds, 234 steals, and 276 assists.
And now I'd like to introduce Ms. Sudan Redden and our swim team coach and her athlete, Mr. Gavin Grace.
Thank you, and thank you to the Board of Ed members for allowing us this opportunity to speak with you and introduce our wonderful student athletes today. We appreciate the time and effort that you give us. And so I'd like to introduce Gavin Grace. He's a junior at Pokemoke High School. Gavin is an extremely dedicated swimmer, very often swimming at 5:00 AM in the morning, and then again after school, and his hard work and dedication and perseverance and drive to want to be better is just phenomenal, and it just spreads out to everyone, and so I am grateful for him as an athlete, but also as his character and in person. He is a Minds in Motion recipient. He is our MVP. He won our Sportsmanship Award, and he is All Bayside swimmer for the Bayside Conference. Gavin also competed at the state level in 100 freestyle this year, and he competed last year, and so we are excited that he gets to come back and do it again, and we are extremely proud of Gavin.
Moving on with our program, next we have Mr. Chris Atkins with Snow Hill High School.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us, Mr. Taylor. Just last time to say hello, D, so, yep. Board of Education, Executive Team, thank you for having us. Again, being able to stand up here and talk about Snow Hill High School excelling again at winter sports, as small as we are, as a 1A school, and doing as great as we do is always an honor. To introduce first, some Bayside and regional champions, head indoor track coach, Mr. Bradley Kraus.
Good afternoon, everybody. Mr. Kraus here. So I've got two of my athletes here I'd like to just quickly talk about and recognize. The first is Mr. Miles Martin. He earned the title of Bayside and Regional Champion for the shot put. This is my right-hand man when it comes to, yeah, round of applause for that. He helps me out tremendously, both through indoor and outdoor track. He helps train and teach the younger generation, the younger classes of shot and discus throwers, and he does an exceptional job of that, getting them ready for competition, all while continuing to practice himself, make sure he is where he needs to be for competition, and as you see, he continues to achieve and impress us every single season, so super proud of this kid. He works tirelessly, is a great student, as well as a great athlete, and I'm excited to see what he does this season in outdoor and his last senior year for indoor and outdoor as well. So, Mr. Miles Martin.
And my second athlete I'd like to introduce is Ms. Ally Suarez-Apacheche. She's one of my distance athletes. She's a junior, and she's already extremely decorated in the track and field sport. She's one of my team captains. She does a wonderful job of leading the team through warmups and through workouts every day, and it's nice to know that if there's ever a day that I'm not able to be there, I've got her to rely on to help lead the distance crew through their workouts and hold them accountable and push them to be their very best. She's a great soul, great person, kind-hearted, and extremely competitive. She, her competitive drive is unmatched to any athlete that I've ever had the pleasure to work with. This season in indoor, she earned Bayside Championship for the 800 meter and the 1600 meter, and was Regional Champ for the 1600 meter as well. So, Ms. Ally Suarez-Apacheche.
Now to introduce one of our girls' basketball players and our entire girls' basketball team, head coach, Ms. Courtney Keith.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. So Mara Milburn is First Team Bayside selection as a senior. She has finished her career with 1,457 points, but more than that, she's a member of NHS, Mu Alpha Theta, Beta Club, and she loves the game of basketball. She's a great leader. We're definitely going to miss her a lot next year, and she plans to go to Chesapeake College in the fall to continue playing. And then we have our whole squad, and I do want to take a second. Her, Marlin Milburn, is also a senior, my only other senior twins. We're going to miss both of them. She finished her season, so, 975 points. We were trying to get to that 1,000-point mark. We were so close, but again, she made Second Team Bayside honors, and certainly will be missed next year overall. But as a team, I can tell you, this group is just a pleasure to be around. They're good kids, they're well-rounded. There's not a girl on this squad who has a GPA of less than 3.0, so I think that's worth a maybe a little. Together, we ended the season 17-9, which is the best record we've had in 10 years. I gotta look at my notes. Sorry, y'all. Oh, so then, yeah, obviously, we won that regional championship. It was a packed gym at Cambridge-South Door Chester. We kept the lead the whole time and our composure. We pulled it off and took a very long trip to Southern Garrett, which was also very enjoyable, so this is a great group. I'm happy to recognize them.
Coach Keith neglected to say that this is their third regional championship in the past five years, and they have played in five straight regional championships, so these girls are crushing it, so congratulations, girls. Next to introduce, our First Team All Bayside athlete is, for the boys, is head coach Sean Johnson, who also, I would be remiss if I didn't say, has now played in four straight regional finals, and has led these young men to become better human beings, so Coach
Demar Brunson Jr., First Team All Bayside this year. He was our leader on the team. Scored 479 points this year, averaged 20 points a game. He's well on his way to reaching that 1,000-point mark. He's had 100, almost 200 points last year, so he's on his way to get there. Excellent student. He has like a 3.3 GPA. He's ready. He's my coach on the floor, and everybody knows, anybody else think about playing basketball, you need that, and he's definitely that. He pushes those guys, and I can't wait to see what he does next year. Demar Brunson Jr.
For this next award, I'm not going to allow Coach Atkins to introduce himself, because he would probably skip right over it. His quiet demeanor and his unwavering support for Snow Hill High School has given him the opportunity to be presented for the second time this school year with an award that is given to him by a group of his peers. It speaks to Coach Atkins's dedication to his sport, to his craft, and as an educator, and he should be commended for all of these things. Coach Atkins has been named the 2025 Bayside Wrestling Coach of the Year, in addition to the District Eight Athletic Director of the Year, so. And in case his face didn't show it, he hates every minute of this.
And now, I'm going to talk about the reason why I love coaching. One of my wrestlers here, and right here, we had Herman Alvarez was our Bayside Champion at 165 pounds this year. When I say the job of a coach is to create better human beings, I feel like I've done a pretty good job. This young man finished 34-7, had 20 pins this year, finished second in the region, and is one of my, yeah, one of my boys. Love him very much, and I'm very happy to be able to recognize him, Herman Alvarez.
And now moving on to Stephen Decatur High School and Athletic Director Dan DeBronz.
How's everybody doing today? Thank you for inviting us to the board today to recognize our winter sport athletes. Stephen Decatur had a great winter. We had 298 student athletes participate in winter sports this year. 74% of them, I'm proud to say, qualified for the Minds in Motion Award, which is 3.25 grade point average or higher, so we're very proud of that, as well as we've won, we won 79% of our games on the court or on the wrestling mat, so we're very proud of that as well. Up first, we're going to do our indoor track awards, and I have Coach Hummel and Coach
Good afternoon. I want to introduce Lotus Wise. Lotus was our lone qualifier for the state track meet. She qualified in the 3 and the 500. I get to coach her every day. It is my blessing. She's a wonderful person. She's a better person, and she has a track star, and she's a pretty good fast runner, so it really is an honor to coach and to have her on the team. Coach Hummel has her accomplishments that she would like to go over right now.
All right, we got two people here to brag on Lotus today. So Lotus, in the 300 meter, she qualified for the state meet. She ran the state meet with a time of 43.77. To give a perspective on that, that is, puts her at seventh, or second place all time for Decatur records, only for, second to the 2007 time of 4.25, or 42.54 by Star Belmont. Lotus also qualified for states in the 500 meter run with a time of 121.54. That was a personal record for Lotus. Again, that puts her as second place all time for Decatur, only behind the 2006 time of 120.76, so she's shy by like, you know, less than a second to Joya Canfield. To give you a little bit more perspective, just, I just grabbed one meet. At the Bayside meet, Decatur scored, the Decatur girls' team scored 45 points. 26 of those points came from Lotus alone, and that was just four events. She actually scores, is able to score more in outdoor track, because she's able to do, we have long jump and triple jump in outdoor track, so we look forward to seeing how she does. Unfortunately, she started out the outdoor track season with some stress fractures, but she's on her way on the mend, on the way back, and we look forward to bragging about her outdoor track accomplishments next time we come down here. accomplishments next time we come down here.
Thank you, everyone. We have, one of our girls had to step out to go to work, but we have some girls and boys to recognize from our amazing swim season this winter. And our first is Molly Hoffman as First Team All-Bayside Conference Award. Kalen Reiser was also First Team All-Bayside Conference Award and part of the 200 Freestyle Bayside Champion Relay. Bryce Gill was First Team All-Bayside Champion Conference Award. And Gavin is the same First Team All-Bayside. And then we have Kendall Bagley, who is our one and only Bayside Individual Champion in the 500 freestyle. And she was also in the 200 freestyle relay that were also Bayside Champions with our other ladies. And Emma Walsh was a part of that 200 freestyle relay Bayside Champions.
But we did have one First Team All-Conference girls' basketball player today, and that was Allison Swift. Congrats to Allison. We're gonna take care of our boys' basketball team next, and I have head coach BJ Johnson.
Good evening. This is a bittersweet moment for me, being that this will be my former coach, Mr. Taylor's last time to get to witness this, you know. And we gonna miss you, man. You've been great to us, and couldn't have done it without you, man. The guidance that you gave me, man. So I can't, I can't express enough gratitude towards you, man. Thank you. Yep. Alright, so we have our Bayside undefeated boys' basketball championship. We have Davin Chandler, Noah Tucker, Elijah Fields. My God. Okay, you don't want me to say Sir Judah. Sir Judah Carmack, Caleb Loring, and Solomon David. Conference. You know, we're gonna miss him, but the other team's not gonna miss him. This kid's probably lost, I think, four games in his Bayside career, and he's two-time Player of the Year at the Bayside Conference, Davin Chandler. He's going to Vanderbilt University. Davin.
And last but not least, the leader of our boys' basketball program, just got a second in a row, Coach of the Year, Coach Johnson.
I gotta tell a quick story, since this is my last time. This boy was in the 10th grade, I was his basketball coach. And so I started practice, and everybody was there but this young man. So I said to the kids, I said, "Where is BJ?" "Listen, Mr. Taylor, I think he's on the phone." That's back when we had payphones in school. "So I think he's on his phone lining up a date for tonight." And the phone was out in the hall, and I go out the other door, and he's laid up on his phone smiling from ear to ear. Had a basketball with me. So I threw the basketball about this far away from him against the wall, and I'd never see somebody jump and scream and yell and everything. He's never forgot that. But I think it woke him up. He wasn't late for practice ever again.
Alright. Next, but not least, the, our boys' and girls' wrestling program, led by Coach Josh August.
Alright, thank you for having us, Mr. Taylor. First, we're gonna recognize our Bayside Champions. So out of 28 weights, so it's 14 for girls, 14 for boys, we had 11 total. So that says something about our program and the strides that both the boys and the girls teams make. So for our Bayside Champions, Juan Hinaosa. Aaron August. Jake Salo. Amari Emmanuel. Nate McDaniel. Melanie Ruiz is sick today, she couldn't be here. First up for girls, Makaya Robinett. Amari Purnell. Shania Bernier. A.J. Johnson could not be here as well today. you just can come back to the front and maybe get your certificate that way. And we have a couple more over here. For our regional champions, Juan Hinaosa. Rachel Plata. Jake Salo. Iri Carmack. And A.J. Johnson's not with us. He's our region champs. 2A East. We'll do the same thing. They can just stay up. I got our state finalists and state champions. Our state finalists for this year, Juan Hinaosa. Nate McDaniel. Rachel Plata. And A.J. Johnson. And this year, we continued our streak with having state finalists with state champions. So for third straight year, state champion Elijah Colick. And on the girls' side, state finalist last year, she got the job done this year, state champion Shania Bernier. Champions, 2A East Region Champions, and state finalist. We lost to a good Team Honeytown this year, but a great season overall for our boys' team. And I'm gonna call up those young men now. Kyle Wilson. Paula Amina Weaver. Yeah, boys and girls can just slide over for a sec if you can. We're all one big happy family, though. Jackson Archer. Austin Candeloro. Ree James. Lucas Kohut. Alex Reel. Brayden Bell. Malix Nichols. Gio Smith. Wyatt Cook. Cole Muir. Malachi Christopher Mason. that puts in the most time with the girls is longtime, almost 20 years now, Coach Don Pirana. This year, for the girls, this is our first official actual team, a girls' team. We've had girls that wrestle, but this is the first year we've had a girls' team, and they ended up being state runners-up. So big accomplishment for them, and we look forward to what comes in the future. With these other young ladies up here, we have Callie McBride. Zoe Rill. Sage Sturgis. Betty Barueta. Chelsea Mazarego. Beyonce Rodriguez. Maya J. Johnson-Guerrero. And Amelia Gonzalez.
Alright, our last team, our Unified Strength and Conditioning Team. Our co-head coaches are both here today, Lindsay Owens and Shannon Bunn.
Thank you for having us. We actually have 67 participants on our Unified Strength and Conditioning Team. Today, we have 25 of our members here that are celebrating. We had a successful season. We had many PRs amongst all of our team members, and we finished first in both the divisions in state, which allowed us to be the state champions for the second time in a row. So congratulations to you guys.
all of our student athletes?
Thank you everyone for your time today. Can we give one more round of applause for all of our student athletes?
Okay, thank you for your indulgence. One of the best parts of our job, right there. Now it's time for individual and delegation comments. All individuals who's... I'm sorry, I did forget that. I have resolution proclamations. And first, I'm going to begin with Mr. Buchanan for School Library Month.
Thank you, Mr. Ferante. This month is very important to me. My wife retired as a school librarian and so I lived, I lived what was going on in the library just about every day of my life. And I know all the hard work that is put into running a media center in a school. School Library Month, April 2025. Whereas the school library is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information. And whereas the school's librarian role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part of the instructional program of the school. And whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the school librarian in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies to provide literature appreciation activities and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. And whereas lifelong learning begins, it is systematically developed through the school library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools. And whereas the school library contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and quality in education. And whereas the school librarians of Worcester County have dedicated themselves to work for the quality school libraries for all students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Worcester County Board of Education does hereby proclaim April 2025 as School Library Month and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Worcester County to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month. And this is signed by Todd A. Ferante, President, Worcester County Board of Education, and Louis H. Taylor, Superintendent of Schools. And Brittany Tigler, I think is going to accept.
Yeah, thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gordy for Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Mr. Ferante. Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5 through 9, 2025. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education. And whereas teachers encounter students with widely differing backgrounds. And whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers and is catering to the children of this community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Worcester County Board of Education proclaims May 5 through 9, 2025 to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Worcester County Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted this 15th day of April 2025, signed by our Board President, Todd Ferante, and our Superintendent, Louis Taylor.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Spex Chockley Lynch. Okay, thank you. Now I'm going to ask Ms. McCumice to read School Nurse Appreciation Day. Ms. McCumice. And please make sure your mic is on.
It's on. National School Nurse Day, May 7, 2025. Whereas students are the future and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in a school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors, social determinants, that impact student health. Whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and education success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams, school health services, 504 IEPs, disaster emergency planning, to address the school population. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Therefore, be it resolved that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishment of school nurses everywhere and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools and offering gratitude for the nation... We offer gratitude for the nation, school nurses, who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy, in school, and ready to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work. Not just on this National School Nurse Day, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Be it further resolved that Worcester County Board of Education does hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 7, 2025, as School Nurse Day, adopted this 15th day of April 2025. Signed, Todd Ferante, President, and Louis H. Taylor, Superintendent.
Thank you. Can we ask Ms. Lauren Williams and Ms. Endel Calford about words? Thank you. Okay. And now, for individual and delegation comments. And all who signed up to address the Worcester County Board of Education may do so for one or two minutes regarding information, accommodations, or concerns which may need future board attention. Concerns that are specific to an individual will not be discussed in an open session and should be directed to appropriate district personnel for investigation. When you're called to address the board, please state your name and address for the record. And up first, I have Pat Barbley.
Good afternoon, Board.
Pat, would you make sure you pull the mic up to you and make sure that it's on, please? Thank you.
Is it on?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. Good morning, Pat Barbley, or afternoon, Newark, Maryland. The Board will make the decision next week for the new Superintendent of Worcester County Schools. I am asking that each candidate be considered for what they can bring towards improving Worcester County schools, offering the best learning experience for our children. Although we don't know her yet or aren't familiar with her, Dr. Monique Wheatley Phillips is bringing 30 years of experience. Seventeen as a classroom and resource teacher. More recently, she has held numerous administrative positions that will allow her to bring a fresh, objective, and impartial look at the many issues challenging our Board and administration, such as the safety and discipline issues, sexual content literature in the school libraries, adapting to the blueprint, and the financial burden acquired with the implementation of the blueprint. Her current position as Consulting Administrator, School Operations, will facilitate her in establishing a fresh and positive relationship with our county commissioners as they navigate and negotiate yearly budgets. She has expressed interest and willingness to build an open and transparent relationship with our teachers, many of whom are apprehensive of expressing their concerns to the current administration. By far, Dr. Wheatley Phillips' most essential attribute is she has a family, she is a parent. As a parent herself, she can appreciate and emphasize with parents, she has kids, she's been there. She can emphasize and appreciate the students' view also, empathize, excuse me. This will build a strong and trusting connection with the Worcester County parents. Please impartially review each candidate and make the best choice for our students. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anyone else on my list. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak today? Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President, may I please ask for a brief recess?
Yes, that's exactly where I was going. Dr. Annie, I had you on my mind.
Thank you very much. I deeply appreciate it.
We're going to ask for a brief recess. It's going to be five or 10 minutes and we'll resume. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to resume our meeting, everyone, and we're at number six, point one, expanding the expression tool, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wallace.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. I'm going to introduce Ms. Belinda Goulias, who is going to share with us an expanding expression tool, along with the Worcester County Public Schools graduate, Ms. Zoe Jackson. And I will say, this tool, in a little bit different format, was presented to us at A&amp;S with our ML teachers, and I am super excited. I know Ms. Paris is here to see it too, because we're super excited how Cedar Chapel has taken it and given our students another way to expand their expression. So I'm going to turn it right over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. We appreciate that. We are excited here, of course, to talk about expanding expression, and of course, my help here, as well as a phenomenal, amazing, wonderful, on top of the world, graduate of Worcester County, special education teacher that just blows it away every single solitary day. She was one of the very first that embraced EET, Expanding Expression Tool, and really used it in her classroom very quickly. It made me smile. It was on a principal's day, and on my door was a giant one of these, like, size of paper, each one of the circles, and it had all descriptions about me. My favorite was that I was bad and bougie, was my very, very favorite one. Yes, bad and bougie, and I will never, ever, ever forget it my entire life. I will be 100 years old, on my deathbed, saying, "I am bad and bougie." So, just to talk about expanding expression, again, we saw what Angela Paris was doing with this, with multilingual learners, and said, "Oh, wow, this is about language. Our kids need language, because they have communication devices." They, 99% of our students are nonverbal or limited verbal communication ability. So when we talk about building language for our students, we're really talking about finding ways for them to practice their language and bring that language to the next step. Why are we using it? Because it is a phenomenal tool for therapists, educators, parents, and it's just about developing language. We've taken it a little bit further and changed it up a bit for our students, but here are some of the basic components. You're going to say, "Well, what is expanding expression?" It is a tool that we use that is a physical and visual reminder of different parts of explaining and expanding our expressions. And so Zoe's going to talk about what each bead means.
So there's several beads here, and each one represents something different. So the first one is the green, the green bead, which is the group, so like, what category it goes in, so they can kind of identify what it is. And then it goes further on to the blue bead, which is, what does it do? So like, what action does the thing do? If it's an apple, they eat, you eat an apple, so that would be the action that goes with it. And then it goes on to the little white one, which has an eyeball on it, so like, what does it look like? So, an apple's red, so that's what they would do with that one, and then they would keep going on. And then there's a little wooden one, so what is it made of? So, an apple has a seed, it has a stem, so they would continue and describe it, and then the pink one is kind of the same a little bit, so like, what, what parts does it have? So like, again, like, the apple would be the seeds, the stems, and then the white one is, where would you find it? So like, an apple, I would find it at, on a tree, on an apple tree, or wherever the kid associates an apple with. So, maybe on the table, or at home, would be where they would have it. And then the oranges, what else do you know? So just getting anything else that the other beads didn't hit, that the student knows already about it.
Thank you, Zoe. So, how do we use that? Zoe explained all of the different parts of that. Students would actually hold their beads, and board members, you've got a little set of beads there in your little plastic bag. So students would hold those beads and run through that visual reminder, or teachers would model that for them, in order to make sure that they're able to step through each of those, those components, those seven components of the EET system. Additional modifications that we can make for our students who are nonverbal or limited verbal communication, and are struggling with language. So students can have an average IQ and still be nonverbal, or have limited verbal communication, and have communication devices as well, but this tool can help those students build that language even more. So Zoe's going to talk a little bit about how we overlap that with Augmented and Alternative Communication, or AAC.
So, it's really nice to pair this with a communication device, especially with the folders that are in the communication devices that you can see on the screen up here. So, for the first one, if you're going through this by bead, bead by bead, the first folder you would hit would be like, depending on which kind of system you have, would be the things folder, or the categories, and then it would have it broken down into the groups. So like, there would be a food group, vehicles group, and all sorts of different things like that, which is really nice, and then they can keep going through their communication device and go to the action pages. So like, what does this thing do that they have picked to describe or write about, which is very helpful. So it's also teaching that pathway with the communication device, so they can connect it, make a real clear connection of how to describe or write something for us. And the same thing with an eye gaze device too, so they can use their eyes and look at the category on the screen, and tell us what they would like to write as well.
So students would hold their eyes, their eye gaze, so down here at the bottom, the device reads where their pupils are, and then they can hold their eyes on a specific cell, so they would hold their eyes on category, and then that would open up and then give them all kinds of categories to choose from. So even students who are not able to use hands are able to use their eyes to communicate, which is pretty phenomenal. For students who have to have some, a bit more language, and even some writing skills, this might be a prompt that we would put in front of students with some kind of object that we would put in front of them, in order for them to use the tool as well. Again, a visual prompt to help them expand their language. For students who need more picture support, they would have, they would use the pictures that are here in the second column, in order to support looking for or coming up with ideas to put into this prompt. Other students would use a more basic prompt. When teaching how to use the different beads, and presenting the different beads to students, we might start with just the green bead, and we might do some activities about sorting into categories. So students would have several pictures of different things, and students would begin sorting those into different categories. Most of the time, we use something called a core board, and I meant to bring that in, walked right out without it, which has all of the core language that we use on a day-to-day basis. We can hold up the core board, and we can make lots and lots of sentences using that core language. But when we need to talk about something specific, we need to pull out something called fringe boards. So we use a lot of fringe boards here, and again, in order to expand expression. So if we're teaching, white, what does it look like, we're going to put out some fringe boards that has, that have all different kinds of descriptors and words that students can choose from, in order to describe what they are seeing. Here's an example of what, a fringe board that we would use for students to describe the parts of something, or what something is made of. If we were talking about animals, this might be a board that we would use, a fringe board that we would use with students, so that they could describe different animals and the parts that different animals have. In working with where, we would do lots of activities for students to match, where do we find the pencil? Well, we might find the pencil in the desk. So these would be activities that we would use in order to teach the concept of the seven components in the EET. In order to support our staff and our families as well, we provide lots of resources for them to engage in. Here are just a few that we have in here. This whole presentation is on the front page of our website, so if you were interested, it's there. Several resources within here that have much more explanation, and actually videos. One is where a student, they introduce, they introduce the concept to her and say, "Here's an apple," and she goes on and talks about a worm that could be in the apple, and you can't eat the apple. But she didn't describe the apple. They worked with her using the EET system, and came back and did another video of that, and you can see where she describes the apple with all seven components, and how that could easily be translated into a writing activity as well, expanding their expression, expression not only verbally, but written expression as well. So here's an example of what we might put in front of a student. We would go through these different areas, and students might fill in all of those areas with different pictures that have different descriptions that go with each area of the As I said, we also use it to describe people, autobiographies, biographies. So we've used it during American Education Week, we did something, a turkeygram, that we do every year, and so each staff person gets a turkeygram from a student, and each student gets a turkeygram from a staff person. And so everybody sits down, and they worked through this this year, in order to provide each person, each, each student and each staff person in our building with their, their own turkeygram. What's great is, with all the adults, you go into their rooms or their offices, or wherever they are, and you see all of them hanging on their walls. I giggle each time I go in, because there, the turkeygram is still sitting, and it's April, so they absolutely love them. So, we did one more project that we really, really had a lot of fun with. For April, during Poetry Month, we like to use our EET, our EET tool, in order to create different, I guess this time would be a CCSS gram. So what we did, and I nagged him a little bit, as well as his secretary and a couple other people around him to answer my questions, so we created a really adorable book all about Mr. Taylor, with all kinds of interesting things in here, some serious stuff in here, like, he likes the color blue, he likes pizza, the one I found interesting is, he likes anything cool in the gang. I knew all the sports ones were coming, but the best part, of course, is that he loves to visit Cedar Chapel Special School, with lots of pictures in there as well. So, Mr. Taylor, I'll give you a copy of this. So students used this in every classroom, and then they created EETs. This was their, their template here, this CCSS gram, and they, we've created a whole book where students completed their own EETs about Mr. Taylor, from the story that they read, where they've seen you, what they, they might have engaged with you. I love a couple of them. There's one that says that you are shiny. It's my favorite, shiny. And you were blessed also with bad and bougie too, I just have to say. And I'm, I'm sharing bad and bougie with you. So, we just wanted to share that with you, and for you to know how much our students really do care for you. You're very welcome.
Belinda, I have to tell you, Dawn hounded me too about it, and the last day she hounded me.
Please, just answer the questions.
She said, "Can you get this filled out?" I said, "Just put anything, I'm too busy." I didn't know you were doing this.
There's always a method to my madness.
I got you now.
Always a method to my madness, guaranteed. Just a few more things about our EET. We have a poetry display, we, it's on our website, but we also have it on display, that used EET with that, at the Worcester County Arts Council, thank you, I had to think of it there for a minute, Worcester County Arts Council, and actually, this piece right here by Kennedy is on display there. We will also have CCSS Poetry Night, which will happen May 8th at Worcester Technical High School, where they have done a whole new project of artwork using the EET with creating poetry. So, any questions?
The board, Ms. Sattis?
Not really a question, but more of a comment. I, I saw this, I think it was this last year, at, are you guys doing this in other schools too? Because I think it was done at Buckingham.
Yes.
Dr. Welch was escorting us around the, the building, and one of the students actually did this, and it was really neat, because he literally went, he'd held one bead, go over it, then he'd pick up the next bead, and it was really neat to see how he used it to create, you know, the, the information around whatever, I can't remember what it was now, but it was just really neat to see how he used this and applied it to what he was doing with it. So, awesome job with that, I think it's really neat. And just another question, what's, is there significance with the flashlight, or is it just?
If you, the little piece of paper, it says shining a light.
Okay, thank you.
A little, a little light to shine a light on it.
Very, it's a really neat concept, and I really like it a lot, so thank you.
Well, the part that I love the most about it is that it provides universal access for all students everywhere, no matter where they are, and it provides access for students in the general education classroom.
Right.
Everywhere.
And I, I thought that that was neat too, because as this boy, you could see that he did have some challenges, as he was going through it, it helped him, but I was just thinking, wow, this would be great for just kids to use in general, to learn, you know, a wider vocabulary when it comes to writing and, and doing different things, so.
Yeah, it actually started in the general education classroom. We just pulled in and adapted it and added more pictures to it for our students who need picture support.
Awesome, thank you.
Belinda, I want to say something about Cedar Chapel Special School. All of you know that Dr. Andes has been one of my mentors, when I took over as superintendent, and a lot of times, when I call him or talk with him, I say, "This is a superintendent conversation, not a board conversation," but one of the pieces of ice, or many pieces of ice that he gave me, he says, "When you're having a really bad day," he said, "Go out and go visit schools, or go sit in a classroom." And sometimes you think, well, you're too busy to do that, but one of, I, I've always done that, and the school that I go to is Cedar Chapel Special School. And I want to tell you something. I invite all of you to visit Cedar Chapel Special School, because when we complain, and we talk about other people, and we don't like the way certain people are doing certain things, go walk through that school. Every time I do that, I come out and I just think, my problems are minimal. It's, it's a, Cedar Chapel is the name, but Cedar Chapel Special is what you will see in that school. And those kids, in their own way, light up, and a lot of times, Ms. Goulias has to tell me exactly what they're doing when they're happy, because you don't know, but she working around them. But I'm going to tell you something, I love all our schools, don't take me wrong, but that is the gem of this school system. There are 54, 56 kids, depends on the year, that go there every day, and we are blessed to have that school. But if you think life is rough, and you don't like something somebody's doing, go take a look at that. I encourage all of you to go in there and walk around, and you will appreciate things a little differently. I know I do it, and Belinda, I want to thank you for your leadership, and for providing that school for a variety of reasons, but also for the superintendent, who gets readjusted every time I walk in there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think it's so easy to embrace, because it's an atmosphere where we just meet kids where they are, and kids can be who they are, and it's okay, and we embrace that about them, no matter who they are and how they come to us. We just, an amazing staff that just meets them where they are and just keeps moving them forward. So thank you so much.
Dr. Andes? Belinda, I just want to say, one of, one of the most gratifying things in our lives is being able to express ourselves, whether it's feeling, emotion.
It's like breathing.
It really is, and this tool is allowing these young kids to express themselves, and it's, it's a great thing. So we want to thank you for bringing it to us and showing it to us, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's magical when they can, they can connect with what they're trying to say in their communication devices, and they can then learn that pathway themselves, which is just amazing.
And we are also grateful that you have a Worcester County graduate working in that school. That's exciting.
And one more thing, can we have a copy, can all the board members have a copy of that, Mr. Taylor?
I do have an electronic copy.
Okay.
I do have an electronic, electronic copy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Shores for the blueprint update.
Why does this always happen with a blueprint update after that? And I just want to say, Zoe Jackson is a Snow Hill Elementary, proud graduate of Snow Hill Elementary, when she had a principal who thought a great deal of her, so congratulations, Zoe. Actually, I don't have much of an update this month. Everything seems to be on hold with the blueprint, although the legislative session has ended. We have no news on funding for the blueprint. I, I believe that will happen when the governor strikes his budget, which will hopefully happen in May sometime. We'll have more news on what might get struck from our blueprint budget. Our implementation plans, again, I believe that sometime at the beginning of the school year, we will be getting feedback on our plan from this year, which will go to 2027. So possibly our new superintendent will be part of that review, so we're still waiting to hear about that, but really, nothing very much going on in the land of, of blueprint right now. So I will continue to keep you posted, mostly probably around the legislative and governor's budget will be the, the biggest news. But other than that, not much going on, unless you have questions for me.
Board members, anyone with questions for, okay, thank you very much, Ms. Shores.
That concludes curriculum and instruction.
Thank you so much. Now we're moving on to administrative operations, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. App for Personnel Exhibit.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. Your April's Personnel Exhibit for the board's consideration, retirements. We have Sandra Friedman, teacher at Stephen Decatur Middle School, and we have Louis Taylor, Superintendent, here at Central Office. New hires, Ernest Brittingham, Custodian II, Stephen Decatur High School, Reagan Chung, teacher, elementary at Berlin Intermediate School, Matthew Driscoll, English teacher at Stephen Decatur High School, Erica Yule, Educational Assistant at Berlin Intermediate School, Paige Folk, teacher at Pokemoke Middle School, Laura Hutchinson, Secretary, Grade Five, Berlin Intermediate School, Margaret Keenan, Special Ed Teacher, Buckingham Elementary School, Erin Kelly, Educational Assistant, Snow Hill High School, Christina Lank, Secretary, Grade Six, Central Office, Diario Mumford, Custodian II, Buckingham Elementary School, Molly Simpson, teacher, Grade Six Math, at Berlin Intermediate School. They are your new hires. Your separations, this month is Gary Carter, Custodian II, Stephen Decatur High School, Conrad Fain, teacher, Pokemoke High School, Mary Ann Francone, Educational Assistant, Berlin Intermediate School, Jennifer Lewandowski, Occupational Therapist, Central Office, Erin McGreal, Occupational Therapist at Cedar Chapel Special School. Promotions, we have Carly Dixon, School Counselor, Pokemoke Middle School, Bennett Dolney, teacher at Stephen Decatur High School, Amber Hall, Media Specialist at Pokemoke Elementary School, Michelle Raffo, teacher at Berlin Intermediate School, Tyree Thornton, Head Custodian at Pokemoke High School, and Suzanne Truitt, Secretary in Transportation at Central Office. The superintendent recommends approval of the Personnel Exhibit as presented.
Thank you, Dr. App. Board, can I have a motion and a second to approve the Personnel Exhibit as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes. A second by Ms. McComas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Dr. App, thank you very much. And we're going to stick with you for the ratification negotiated agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. Yes, we are here today to officially ratify our negotiated agreements with both of our units. The Worcester County Teachers Association and the Worcester County Educational Professionals Association have ratified the agreement, which includes a step and increase for eligible employees, the salary increase... or salary scale adjustment and modified language in both of those contracts. By signing these contracts today, it will mark the official ratification for both the board and the associations for the 25-26 school year. The superintendent recommends the approval of the signing of these negotiated contract agreements.
Okay, so can I have a motion and a second to approve the negotiated contract agreements as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Buchanan.
Second.
A second by Mr. Smack, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Ferrante, at this time, we're going to do the signing, so I'm going to ask for you and Superintendent Taylor to come forth, and as well as Mr. Ivory Smith to come forward
Mr. Ferrante, board, I'd like to thank you for your support. I'd like to thank I agree and Beth and their chief negotiator, Mr. John Carnahan, for a collaborative sessions that we did this year and many years. It's truly a partnership, both the associations, and I appreciate it very much as the board's chief negotiator. So, thank you for the collaboration.
See, I'm going superintendent. Also, I've had the privilege of working with both of these people my entire tenure as superintendent. We had another chief negotiator early on, and then I've had the great privilege of working with John the last few years. And it is truly, Dwayne said it perfectly, even when we don't always agree, it's remained professional the entire time. We respect where they are, they respect where the board and myself is representing the board. And Dr. App has done just a terrific job along with his teams. Most are on the executive level. It blew me out of the water this year that we got it done in a day with each unit. But they were determined, they got in there, they rolled their sleeves up, both groups. And Beth and Ivory, I'm going to miss you guys. The professionalism and the camaraderie that we've shared as professionals has been second to none, and I personally and professionally want to thank you today.
Thank you. I just want to say on behalf of our board, you know, we were apprised by Dr. App of the negotiations as they went on, and we appreciate you, and we thank you for all that you do for the school system. And we just want you to know that we appreciate you working with the board in order to make this happen. So, thank you very much. Now, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. App.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ferrante, for your consideration, board. There's a new policy in front of you, VC-10, Employee Contractors Record Retention, Storage and Destruction. We establish procedure to secure storage and timely destruction of our employee and contractor records in compliance with the Maryland Public Information Act. So, this policy outlines the retention, access and destruction protocols for employment records held by the Finance and Human Resources Department. Superintendent recommends approval of the new policy, VC-10, Employee Contractor Record Retention, Storage and Destruction as Presented.
Thank you, Dr. App. Can I have a motion and a second to approve new policy, V-C-10, Employee Contractor Record and Retention, Storage and Destruction as Presented? Board, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gordy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, and I guess I'm going to stay with you, Dr. App.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. I'd like to ask our transportation manager, Ms. Kim Heiser, to come up and make a presentation to the board.
Can you make sure that's on?
Yep. It's... Pull it close to you, Kim, I think it is on, I think I left it on.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yep. Before you today, I have an exhibit that I am presenting for purchase of a new school bus. We have a contractor, Mr. Scott Shockley, in the Snow Hill area, that currently operates a 2013 school bus that has to go out of service by August 6, 2027. Mr. Shockley's requesting permission to purchase a new bus and sell his current bus to one of our current contracts to be used as a spare bus. It's a little history. In December, I came and I asked permission for Ms. Lewis to purchase a new bus. They have come to an agreement where she would like to not purchase a new bus, allow him to purchase the new, and she'll buy his bus to be used as a spare bus. So, for budget purposes, there will be no impact on our request. The superintendent recommends approval of this exhibit as presented.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the new and used school bus as presented?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Buchanan?
Second.
Second by Ms. McComas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Heiser.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Ferrante.
Thank you, Dr. App. And now, I'm going to, for Physical Operations, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tolbert. I'm sorry, Dr. Wallace.
Safety, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. We continue to have a strong partnership with our sheriff's office, and so, one thing I wanted to share this month in an update, as you... As we sat through quite a bit of winter sports successes this afternoon, that requires extra games that are... Many of them at many of our schools were played at home as they go through playoff runs. And so, a challenge that we've been facing in recent years in trying to cover, have our sheriff's office helping us cover more and more events, has been a budgeting challenge for them. And so, I'd like to thank Dr. Brian Cook, who was in the room, and Mr. Sean Goddard, who reached out to the Maryland Center for School Safety and received another $24,562 in additional grant money for us to give the sheriff's office to continue covering our events that take place after school. So, we thank them for their partnership, and we're grateful to write over that check to the sheriff's office to help them out with their funds. We also are continuing, I wanted to just give you a brief update, to shore up our buildings as we're completing some of the projects that the board has approved earlier this year. So, back to you, Mr. Ferrante.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Any questions for Dr. Wallace concerning that? That's great news. Thank you so much. And now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tolbert for Physical Operations.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrante. First up, we have Mr. Jared Price. As you know, right in the middle of planning for a Buckingham Elementary School project, doing schematic design, and right on top of that, we're getting ready for a Berlin Intermediate School project, and we're looking to do the feasibility study next year. And Mr. Price wants to talk about doing some interviews with some architectural firms. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Ms. Tolbert. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
On February 3rd, we released a request for proposal for architectural engineering services for the Berlin Intermediate feasibility study and ed specs. On March 1st, we conducted a walkthrough of Berlin Intermediate for any interested firms, and 13 firms attended the walkthrough. On March 13th, we received RFP responses from 12 firms. We reviewed and graded each one of those, and I want to thank Mr. Slakem for taking the time to review and grade each of the responses. Following tabulation of each firm's grades, the superintendent is recommending the following four firms be selected for interviews. Becker Morgan Group, Crabtree Werborn Associates, Grimmon Parker, and Hord Copeland Mott. And with your approval of the four firms today, we will schedule interviews by the selection committee on May 7th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Price. Any questions for Mr. Price concerning the process? I think he went over this with the board anyway, so if not, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the following AE firms for the Berlin Intermediate School feasibility selection study.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gordy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. The next item, Mr. Ferrante, is the refresh of our Apple iPad devices. As the board may remember, back in FY '20, the board made a decision with the county commissioner's support to move forward with a one-to-one initiative using Apple iPads for all our teachers and all of our staff. We went through one refresh cycle a few years ago. It's now time to do the second refresh. In this refresh cycle, we have to replace also the cases and the peripheral devices, which includes the crayons and the pencils, the total cost of $4,954,890. That price is off of the meat contract, which is through the state of Maryland. The existing devices will be sold to a third-party vendor to help offset the cost of the new lease. I'm sorry, take any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Tolbert, this is a multi-year lease till 2028, is that correct?
That's correct. It's a four-year lease, Ms. Ferrante.
Okay. Any other board members have questions regarding the Apple lease agreement? If not, the superintendent recommends this for approval, and I'm going to ask the board if I can have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement with Apple as presented, pending legal review.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Smack?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buchanan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Tolbert.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrante. The last item I have for the board is the monthly financial report for the month of March, with total non-salary expenditures of $5,504,149.64, and superintendent recommends approval of the March financial report as presented.
Okay, board, can I have a motion and a second to approve the March 31st, 2025 monthly financial report as presented? Motion by Ms. McComas?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gordy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does that conclude?
It concludes Physical Operations, Ms. Ferrante.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tolbert. And now, I'm going to open it up to my fellow board members for Board of Education comments. Mr. Gordy?
Can you speak into the mic for me, please? No, try to trick me. Mr. Tolbert, the $4 million, I'm sorry, this got by me. The $4 million worth of new computers, is that what I heard you say?
$4.9 million is the total of the new lease, yes.
That's almost five. Is that part of our routine budget? Are there grants out there? Is that coming straight out of our budget process?
We have the annual amount included in our annual operating budget we have for the past few years. We actually included an increase this year to cover the new lease that we're requiring, so it is in the proposed budget for that new lease that we're entering into.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
For board comments, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We're all board comments.
I just wanted to first clarify one thing. Board President Ferrante, at the beginning of the meeting, just let the public know that there was a vote taken and closed on April 7th, and I just wanted to clarify my vote, since I was the only one to vote against it. I wasn't voting against the two applicants. I was merely voting against the vote, because I felt that it was necessary to have three finalists instead of two, mainly to open up the pool for consideration for ourselves as a board and for our focus groups as they meet with them next week. So, that was really the main reason why I voted against that motion. And then, that leads me into the next topic that I just wanted to touch on briefly. Obviously, we all know that this superintendent search is going on right now, and there have been a lot of people who've reached out to me specifically in regards to their opinions on it. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that, as a board member, it's very difficult, because we are in a situation where we need to listen to not only the parents and the teachers, but as well as the employees of Worcester County Public Schools. And obviously, everyone has an opinion when it comes to this application process, and many employees have reached out to me in the last week, mainly people who are part of the Teachers Association and are asking that their voices be heard. So, I'm mainly just offering this up as a suggestion. This is not anything that you need to do or anything like that, but it's... Basically, I'm offering this up since I've been hearing it from constituents, and that is that I would just suggest that maybe the Teachers Association come up with some sort of anonymous survey, as well as potentially the support staff, just so that they feel like their voices are heard when it comes to those focus groups specifically, and that's their concern when it comes to that. And also, while we're on that topic, I do want to say that we have received a lot of input, very strong opinions. input, very strong opinions on both sides, and at the end of the day, I, as well as, I don't, I can't speak for other board members, but I feel like it would be better reciprocated and felt if there was a name attached to any letters that are sent to us, so that we, we know who we are to reach back out to with any concerns in the future when it comes to responding. So, thank you all for, for anyone who has contacted myself and other board members in this process, but it would be very helpful if you were able to attach a name to, to the statement that you are making. So thank you very much.
Dr. Andy's?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Frante. Congress at this point in time is debating federal aid to public schools, and on page fifty-eight of our budget book, we list those sources of federal funding. So as an example, the Every Student Succeeds Act, all those titles that you see there are sources of public funding. So as an, of federal funding, I'm sorry. So as an example, we're estimating that we're going to receive two point one three four 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 six million in Title I funds. And we utilize those Title I funds at Pokomoke Elementary School, Snow Hill Elementary School, and Buckingham Elementary School, which are all Title I schools. In addition, there's Title III, which is language acquisition, Title IV, student support, and so forth and so on, and all of those are listed on page fifty-eight. So, we receive funding through the Title Program, Every Student Succeeds Act, to provide additional supports for students who need it, who need it. Also, the second area of federal funding we receive is special education. And again, if you look on page fifty-eight of our operating, proposed operating budget, you'll see, you will see that we will receive from the federal government, two point one, we anticipate we're going to receive two point one million dollars in federal support for special education. That's not enough. It's not enough to address the issues of what we have, but it's two point one million dollars that are critically important. The third area of debate in Congress will be Medicaid. That's our third source of federal dollars that come into our school system. So as an example, if we provide a service to a student who is eligible for Medicaid through special education, like occupational therapy, physical therapy, or speech therapy, we have an opportunity to build Medicaid, to build Medicaid, to receive some of that funding back. It's, it's never, it's never the same dollar amount. So as an example, I'm just making this up. This is all made up. That service might cost us a hundred dollars, and Medicaid might give us sixty-dollar reimbursement, as an example. But that's a third source of, of dollars for us. And the fourth source of dollars that the Congress will be debating is our food nutrition program, which provides additional support for our students for free reduced meals program that we have. And in order to qualify for a student for a free meal, under the current standards, a single parent, single mom, let's say, with a child, has to have an income of less than twenty-six thousand dollars. Just one example. If you want to see the entire chart, you can simply go to the Maryland State Department of Education website, or you can just simple do a search and look at the food qualifications for free reduced meals. If a student qualifies for a reduced meal, the single parent, the mom in my example, and the child have to have an income between twenty-six and thirty-six thousand dollars in order to be eligible for a reduced meal. Now personally, I don't know how you could ever make it as a single parent with a child on twenty-six thousand dollars. So whenever we say that we have forty-eight or fifty percent of our students are eligible for free reduced meals, we're talking about a significant number of folks in our community who what I call are hard-working, poor folks, and they're making a difference. So, where does our federal dollars come from? And again, you can look at the page fifty-eight, and then on page ninety, there's a description of every single grant, a paragraph that talks about each of those. So, Every Student Succeeds Act is a title program. Number one, federal dollars. Number two, federal dollars is special education. Number three is Medicaid reimbursement, and number four is the food nutrition program that comes out of the United States Department of Agriculture. So, US Department of Ag actually funds that through a grant program. What I'm suggesting is that, in order to help our federal legislators, Senator Alsell Brooks, Senator Van Hollen, and Congressman Harris truly understand the impact that those dollars have and what we use those dollars for, I'm suggesting that we send a letter of information, just a letter of information, that says, here's the sources of funds that we get. Here's where they come from, and oh, by the way, here's what we do with the money. So example, here's what we do with our Title I money at Pokomoke Elementary School, Snow Hill Elementary School, and Buckingham Elementary School, and here's the strict services that it provides for our students. The same thing is true in the area of special education. When we get the two million, two point one million dollars, here's what we do with those dollars in the area of special education, and how they support students with significant needs. And then the same thing is, would be true for Medicaid. Here's the dollars we receive for Medicaid reimbursement. Here's the actual cost of what it costs to provide those services, and here's the kinds of services that we provide to our students who need either speech therapy, occupational therapy, or physical therapy, or other kinds of therapy programs that, that they require. And then finally, what we do with the food and nutrition dollars, which, we operate the largest restaurant in Worcester County. We operate the largest restaurant in Worcester County. So what I'm suggesting, I'm not suggesting that we take a position one way or the other. I'm not suggesting that we lobby. I'm not suggesting that we market. I'm not suggesting any of that. All I'm suggesting is that we put together a letter, that's an informational letter. We send it to Senator Alsell Brooks, Federal Senator Van Hollen, and Congressman Harris that truly lays out and explains what we do with these dollars in Worcester County that makes a difference for our students. Congress is debating it right now. They have, they call it a blueprint, not the Maryland blueprint, the federal blueprint, which says, here's what we need to do. And as I understand it, the Congress is considering cutting eight hundred and eighty billion dollars from the federal budget. And what I'm hoping is by helping to inform our leaders, our federal folks, our Senators and Congressman Harris, of exactly how those dollars are spent, maybe, just maybe, we can hang on to some of those dollars to provide support for our students. So, that's my suggestion. I'll be happy to answer any questions or take any questions from any members of the board on what I'm suggesting. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, one more thing. I'm sorry. I apologize. For, for those of us who, who celebrate the holiday that's coming up, I hope for everyone a very reflective Good Friday. Spend some time reflecting about what Good Friday truly, truly means to all of us who are Christians. And the second thing is, on Easter, please celebrate. Please celebrate Easter and make memories with friends and family. Thank you.
Ms. McComas?
Okay. Are you gonna write the letter?
You're not on.
Oh, I'm not on. I'm sorry. Are you gonna write the letter?
Yeah, we'll take care of it. I would be happy to help, but I...
Okay. I think that's an awesome idea. I honestly do. I, I think what we're dealing with at the moment is, we just need to get this kind of information out. And it's, you know, like you say, it's neither one side or the other. We just need them to know, these dollars are used wisely.
That's, that's it.
Mr. Buchanan?
I had the, the opportunity last week to participate in Reading Day, am I on? Reading Day at Pokomoke Elementary School, and it was great. You have a captive audience when you read to elementary school kids, but when you ask them a question in regard to the book that you're reading, they, they keep on ask, telling you more information. It just goes on and on and on and on. So you have to get to a point where you can kind of act, okay, let's read a little bit more. But that was, that's great. That's great. And I know most of us participate in that. The second things, which is very dear to my heart tonight, is the Fine Arts Festival at Snow Hill High School, where all the art and music in this county is being put out there for the parents and community to see. And I'm glad that, that I can walk in there tonight and, and look at all the artwork and listen to all the music, but at the very end, I don't have to stay till ten o'clock at night taking all the artwork down, which is what I had to do year after year after year. So, if you have a chance tonight, go see the fantastic art and music that's being presented out of our schools.
Thank you, Buchanan. Dr. Heiser, it would be my recommendation, since we're back here, to do an open next week, that we put together the letter, and then we can put it on the agenda when we open up, and we can get a board motion to approve it. How about that? Does that sound okay? Okay? And secondly, I just want to compliment Mabe in our superintendent search process. We've had a very robust, engaged process. This is one of the most important things that the board does, is to hire the new superintendent, and we take that process very seriously. It's been, and it's also a very inclusive process, and that's why we have a lot of focus groups out there who come together. They, they look at each applicant, and they do their pros and cons on what each applicant, the, the good parts and maybe the not-so-good parts about what they bring to the table. And I think it's something that we pride ourselves on, that we've, we've got a lot of community members that come out and engage in this process, and I think that's very important for our school board. As to, to reflect on what Mrs. Addis said, I would just say that anyone who has any concerns can certainly voice them to any board member here. We are always open to hear you. I would also say that we do want you to sign your name to it, because names who are, letters that are sent anonymously mean nothing when they don't have anybody to back them up. So we really need you as an individual, if you want to make a comment or anything. Our emails are listed. You can certainly email us. I know we will all get back to you, or we will respond to you about your concerns. And also, I want to wish everyone a happy Easter. I also think you should spend time with your families. It's a very enjoyable holiday, and I look forward to spending it with my family. And Mr. Smack?
Yes, all.
Am I coming to your house?
Five potatoes, ham, eggs, biscuit. You rock 'em.
Sounds good.
Everyone have a blessed, this is a holy week. Just have a blessed, loving, and think about our Lord and Savior, who sacrificed his life for us. I'm thankful for it. It puts tears in my eyes, but y'all have a blessed, blessed Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smack. Appreciate that. And now, is there any other board members that would like to make any comments? If not, I'm gonna took it, turn it over to Mr. Taylor for informational announcements.
Okay, I have a few announcements as well. You've already heard that tonight at five o'clock at Snow Hill High School will be the Fine Arts Festival. Again, it's a great night to come out and see the amazing work, both vocal music, instrumental music, and the art that these kids produce year in and year out. It totally amazes me. Tomorrow, April sixteenth, is our thirty-eighth, I believe, Carrie, am I right? I guess that. I saw it on something, but thirty-eighth Annual Teacher of the Year Banquet in Ocean City. Exciting night, not only to celebrate fourteen incredible individuals, but to celebrate the profession of teaching. So I want to thank Carrie Steers and her team for their leadership each year of putting that event together. It's always a, a wonderful evening, and I'm grateful that our board will be attending. Schools will be closed Friday and Monday, eighteen through the first, to celebrate spring break, to celebrate the Easter holiday as well. On May sixth, we will have, that's the first Tuesday, I believe, in May, we will have our budget hearing. I'm not sure, mine says seven, but I think it's six. Six PM at the County Commissioner's Office Room, that's where it was held last year. That's where we, we will be there again this year. And then on May twelfth, the Worcester County Public School Retirement and Service Awards Ceremony will be held at four PM at Worcester Tech. Again, that's on May the twelfth. We'll be celebrating retirement and service year awards, and our HR department heads that up. Board members, I want to remind you that in your packets, that there are a list of our high schools and the events that are coming up. Again, May is a busy month. We start, the first one is April the twenty-ninth with the We Excel Banquet at Stevie Kater High School, and it goes from there. So again, I want to remind you to take a look at that chart, and I know it's very difficult to beat all of it, but anything that you can attend, we would greatly appreciate. And I too want to echo what has been said today, for those who celebrate Easter, again, very well said, Mr. Smack, from my perspective as well, as a Christian believer. And for those of you that don't celebrate, please have a, a happy spring break and enjoy your, as Dr. Andy said, your family and friends in the process. So that'll be it for me. Mr. Frante, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. The Worcester County Board of Education is gonna hold a special meeting Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, in the, in this meeting room, Sarah D. Thompson Meeting Room, at the Worcester County Board of Education Central Office located here at sixty-two seventy Worcester Highway in Newark, Maryland. The open session will begin at five-thirty, and we'll immediately consider voting into convening a closed session under general provisions of Article three dash three oh five B of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The board will adjourn the meeting from the closed session as no further action anticipated. The board information is posted on the website, www.wisterktwelve.org, located under Board Meetings and Board Docs. And now, board members, I would ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting today in a second. Motion by Mr. Smack?
Second.
A second? Nobody wants to adjourn. And a second by Ms. McComas? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.